Thank you for coming. Welcome to the March 26th council meeting. I would like a roll call, please. Mrs. Arcisi?
Ms. Darrow, here. Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
I would like to now ask everyone to stand and remove your hats, please. As council president, Rita Darrow leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stay standing while our resident Terry Hudak will say the prayer.
Our blessed Father, I humbly come this evening before you. You give all of His talents, as we're born, dear God, to use for the good of other people. And I want to thank you there for the manor house that I went and asked for the businesses, for material that we needed, and for donations of money for the businesses. They gave it greatly, dear God. I thank you for that. I thank you, dear God, for the volunteers who pitched in and gave their time and a committee of the manor house. I want to thank the mayor and the city council also for having the heat and electricity turned on, dear God. And as you said, you do unto others as you have them do unto us. And you love one another, dear God. And I want to thank you very kindly for your son, Jesus, dying on a cross for each and every one of us. And I want to thank you for the mayor, for the heads of the departments, the firemen and the police and the council, so they all work together for the good of Macedonia. Thank you, God.
Okay. Good job, Terry. All right, we have minutes. Minutes from the March 12th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
May I make a motion to accept the minutes dated March 12th, 2015?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have a financial report.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial report dated February 28th, 2015.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I didn't. I don't think I got them. I did? I didn't see them.
They were emailed out about the middle of March, excuse me, the middle of, yeah, the middle of March, I'm sorry.
Okay, do you know what? I'm gonna have to look back because I don't remember.
I know the date, it was March 17.
I didn't read them, I know I didn't, you know, so I would read them.
It was March 17.
Okay, March 17. Okay, I go back and look. I probably.
All right, now for our next part of the meeting, it is comments by the public. We ask you to sign in, and we have some people that have signed in tonight. When your name is called, please come to the front, to the microphone, give us your name and address. And the first name on the list this evening is Barb Delugos.
My name is Barb Delugos. I live on Valley View Road, Macedonia. I had a question. It said in the news leader that the reason why our financial reports were done in time was because of our finance director. Does he, is he still getting our information?
Well, actually, he's on administrative leave and he has no contact with the city. It's the way it's supposed to be.
Then how, how did he get our budget done? The other thing I want to know, on his personal computer that he had before all this started, he had stuff from Macedonia on there? Does anyone know what was on his personal computer?
I really don't know how to answer that.
Were there residents' names, social security numbers, et cetera? I've had someone open a credit card, knowing my social security number, and I would never give my social security number or write it down anywhere except at the bank. My neighbor has had two incidents like that. It's just, and she's worse than I am.
Well...
You know, anyone could have access to that computer. Anyone at all, if it's at his house. It could be his children, his kids' friends, anybody.
Well, the only thing I can give you as some kind of an answer is that that office is sealed. No one goes in there without the police.
The office is sealed, but on his personal computer, we don't know what's on there, and anybody could have access to it, at his house, where he works, anything. The other thing I have to ask is, how were the roads selected to be repaved?
That I can tell you, Barb.
Okay.
We were given a spreadsheet by the Building and Engineering Department, and they ordered the priority of 1 through X in terms of the roads. And the roads that were selected were based on their recommendations.
I just thought it was kind of odd that all these roads that were first selected are all on the north side of the city, all kind of in a little area. I live on a thoroughfare road. It's crappy. Everybody has to take that road to get to their side street.
We do have, I'm just telling you, the residential roads that were selected, we are repairing parts of Highland and Route 82, all through roads.
Highland at the end, yes.
That's right.
But that's not a residential road.
No, no, it isn't. No, I'm saying the residential roads, you were saying you're on a through road, but the residential roads were selected based on the recommendations from the administration.
Just on the north side.
Well, those were the roads with the most difficulties, that's right. Okay?
Yeah. We live on the forgotten side again.
We won't forget you, Barb. And the roads on the north side, a lot of them are built in the 50s, and they haven't been touched, so that's part of the reason. There are no other people marked down for public comments, so we're gonna move right into our pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 28, 2015.
And I believe we are holding that at second reading?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I think that's what we agreed to.
I do need a second on that.
Okay.
Second?
We already have second on that?
She said she needed a second.
Because you decided to hold it at second, I just needed a second. Rita, because Ms. Darrow has done it, now I just need a roll call.
And if you wait just a second, we'll get you a second.
Ms. Darrow is the second.
Yes.
Second, second.
The second.
Ordinance number 29-2015.
We did discuss this in our work session. Mr. Engel has requested that we move to second reading with this, and I also favor that, so I'm gonna offer it for second reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number 108, 2007, as amended by ordinance number 81, 2009, relating to the Macedonia Occupancy Program and Eligibility Requirements.
Moving on to resolution number 36, 2015.
That is to still be held at first reading?
Yes.
You don't offer?
Do I need to say something?
I'll make a second to your motion to hold it at first reading.
Okay.
Ordinance number 38, 2015.
I just, I'm just assuming, I don't want to assume that you're all in favor of holding it at, because I didn't hear any chatter.
So what's, what is the...
All in favor?
Just holding it at sec, at first.
All in favor for holding it at second.
At first.
First.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Timeout. We're on 36, correct?
Yes.
All right, no.
And Ms. Tully?
Moving on to ordinance number 38-2015.
This we are holding at first reading also, I believe we agree to that.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second to hold it at first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, ordinance number 39, 2015.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 39, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance approving and editing the inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
This is basically housekeeping, where we do updating records. We do this every year, so Mayor, I would ask that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 39, 2015, please.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 40-2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 40, 2015, for first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the current appropriations ordinance 116, 2014, to appropriate funds for a full-time human resource personnel administrator of the city of Macedonia.
Moving on to ordinance number 41, 2015.
I'd like to offer ordinance 41, 2015, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance establishing a part-time position of public record clerk with the mayor's office and establishing compensations therefor.
Moving on to number 42, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 42, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution appointing Al Kalish to the income tax review board in order to fill our recent vacancy.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law resolution number 42, 2015, please.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution 42 passes. Al Kalish has been with our city for years, working for the city, very knowledgeable about many things in our city. He's not only applied for a position on this board, but he's also, once again, for the third time, along with the Messels, on the Future Growth Committee. Thank you, Al. Moving on to number 43, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 43, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution asking the governor to reconsider his proposed allocation of school funding, school funding plan.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post resolution number 43, 2015.
Second. Mayor, can you explain this real quick for the general audience?
Absolutely. This is to help defend our schools from losing $2.2 million to the state. Our city has been ransacked with the removal of mutual municipal funds, with all the things that have been taken away from us, and now they're done with that. We got a billion and a half dollars carryover, and now they're gonna start taking money from the schools. We had a presentation in our last meeting by the trustees from Sagmoor Hills. For those of you that didn't see it, they did a good job, like a tag team, one right after another, explaining how devastating this is. And it is. If the schools have money taken away from them, unfortunately, the municipalities and the schools go after the same wallet for more money. So I'd like to thank council for passing this, because it's not only in support of our schools, but also trying to send a signal, enough is enough. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
We didn't pass it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the explanation. Now!
You're pretty confident in that vote, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, Ms. Darrow had offered it for adoption.
Yeah.
And then you made explanations. So was there a second?
Second.
Okay.
We're up to voting.
Now we are to vote.
Now. What's your pleasure?
I was gonna say, I thought I missed something.
Okay.
Ms. Darrow? Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes, I would just like to make one comment. This was provided by the Treasurer of Schools in our meeting of Finance Committee for the Schools. And what's interesting about what is being taken from the school system funding is not only the 1% reduction of state funding, but there's a 1% additional reduction that is taken by calculating 1% of the money that the local taxpayers pay. So when you, which is basically $393,000. So in essence, the state money is reduced not only because we are receiving a loss of benefit from the state funding, but they're also computing that because we make so, we take so much money in locally, we're gonna reduce the state funding even more. So it's, I say, I support this resolution as a yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Now, are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion amending Merrick Court Fund 2020, used for updating software maintenance, to be used for the purchase of general offense code and traffic code yearly updates to our ordinances at a proportional cost of total codification.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this is basically housekeeping again, it's nothing special. Moving on, is there any correspondence to the clerk?
I have none, sir.
All right. I'm gonna go into the mayor's report, and there's a couple of things I'd like to point out this evening. You know, we're tackling the task of fixing roads, but we had some questions as to what have we been doing over the years? And I had our engineer, Nick, do a job of coming up with everything that's been done since 2004. And it's kind of interesting, I'm gonna pass these out for council, because the council absolutely wanted to see these, so I'll pass them out. And then I have some for the press. So if there's any extras, pass them back to me, please. And if we, if we look at this, we see that going back to 2005 and 2005, we were, our capital road improvement was buying down debt. We had almost a million dollars in debt from previous roads being fixed in our neighborhoods with borrowed money. We had $3 million of debt in our tax department. So that's a pretty big hurdle right off the bat, to take that $3 million, add to it another million dollars in debt from capital improvement programs that were paid for with borrowed money. We were in the hole so far that it became the policy of this administration to, number one, pay down the debt. And after that, because our carryovers were dangerously low, we have to be careful, because if we ever get into a position again like we were when I started, where we have a negative carryover, we can be taken over by the state. And I don't know if people realize what that means, but the state comes in and they can impose a tax, and we can't do anything about it. So we've got to say that over the years, there's been, up until today, $234,782,545 spent. And if you include the 271 ramp and 271 widening, which will be done in '16, that's $307,000. There's some projects in here that don't even reflect the total cost. For instance, we did the intersection of State Route 82 and Route 8, and made double turn lanes there. We paid only $47,000 of that, but it was almost a $300,000 job. GPD started with this with South Freeway Drive, that's number 11. And after that, we had a lot better record keeping. Actually, Nick had to go to our audits to find out what was being spent before that. But at that time, you have to remember, in defense of our engineer, he was all alone. There was just one man. And a lot of this was being farmed out. Whereas now, we have a company that does our engineering and is much, much better tracking what's being done, what needs to be done. Some of the roads that we fixed in that time were also done in conjunction with our neighbors. Like for instance, Twinsburg, we did Shepherd Road. Another one that was done was Ledge Road, and that was in 2004. And with Ledge Road, we actually split the cost with Northfield. Because Northfield, it's an amazing road, Ledge Road. At one time, when I took office, the speed limit on one side of the road was 25, and on the other side of the road, it was 35.
Yes, it was.
So, you know, we took care of that, and we went into a partnership with Northfield, and that was the first road done. Also, I'd like to thank my staff for coming up with some of the figures here as far as pay raises. In 2010 and 2011, there were 0% pay raises for my staff. Because in 2009, we had to make those cuts right across the departments because of the recession. And actually, we had police and firemen laid off. Every department was affected, and wages were froze. 2002, 2013, 2012, 2013, the city Macedonia employees received 3% raise, raises. And this is with five unions, negotiating with five unions. And in '14 and '15, they received 2% raises. So if you use those percentages spread over the years where there were 0% increases, it averages out to about a 1.67% increase in wages each year since the layoffs. I'd like to thank our unions for working with me over the years, because I think we're not really out of line, and I don't know of any other city that ever got a 0% increase in contract negotiations. And lastly, I'd like to say Happy Easter to everyone and a blessed Passover. And that's the end of my report. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, charter review, we'll have two meetings in April, April 8th and April 15th, both meetings will be starting at 6:30. And the Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for April 20th at 5:30.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report on the Finance Committee slash Streets and Highways slash Stormwater meeting that we held on March 19th to review where we are with our revenue this year. Our first quarter revenue from the income tax was approximately $2.1 million, which is slightly down from 2014, but is still well above what we were collecting in 2011 and 2012, and several hundred thousand above, as a matter of fact. So, but we're watching this closely. We are putting a huge investment in roads this year, not only on our residential roads, but on Route 82 and the, also the new entrance ramp, which I understand will be in place in September of 2015 to 271. We discussed improving the way that we're making road selections in terms of which roads to repair and what priority order. And what we're doing is, the engineer is, will complete a, what's called a pavement management assessment, which for every road in our city, that will be engineering and scientifically based. And as we go along, we will select additional roads based on those criteria and the ranking order that we receive from the engineers. We should receive that, as they have told us, probably towards mid to the end of May, so we will have another meeting at that time, because our revenues from income tax become much easier to work with and project for the rest of the year after we go through the April-May period, when we receive income taxes from everybody paying their taxes. So we're gonna be having a meeting towards the end of May, looking at where we are with financing, any pulled-up repairs, additional work that we would like to have done this year, and that we can finance this year. On the stormwater issues, we've had some discussions on that. We're still, we were waiting for information from a testing report, and I don't know, but I'm gonna ask a little bit later if we have received that yet. But we have been reviewing the briefings that were provided by the DSCC, the Stormwater Committee, from the 2007, 2011 period, which basically has set our priorities for subsequent years for what we're gonna finance in terms of stormwater prevention and repairs. And we are currently, this year, our number one priority is in fact the number one priority from that Stormwater Committee, which was the stormwater problems that have been created behind the Our Lady of Guadalupe Church. And then also, we're looking at some significant road problems related to a crossover area on Sioux Lane, and we'll be looking at engineering for that. So that was the purpose of the meeting. We completed the meeting, I'm gonna have minutes out on that over the weekend here. And generally, we have moderately good news on revenue, and we will be looking at a more detailed and more engineering-based road assessment by the end of May. So that's my report.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna have a work session regarding the mop, April 16th at 6:30.
Okay. Just one more thing on those roads. The Engineering Department is going to go into an extensive study. We have 70 lane mile, or I'm sorry, 155 lane miles, 70 miles of road, and they're gonna walk it, not drive it, walk it. And then they're gonna assess the roads after walking all that way. So look at a possibly weight-loss plan here that'll be going into place this summer. All right.
Mr. Mayor...
Committee reports, yes.
The Parks and Recreation Board met, we are still looking forward towards the festival that's forthcoming, and I'll let Angela give you more details on that as well, making another, it's not too late to sign up for the Nightway, the 5K and the One Mile Walk that will be held at the high school. If you live on my street, you get to see those runners every day, because they come from the high school and they train, and all of a sudden, around 3, 3:15, here are those kids come running down the hill. So it's to help support our high school teams. As far as the stormwater, as a member of the DSCC, I've asked the mayor to resurrect that. We have two members who would like to rejoin. We have a third person who would like to be a part of that, who represents Lake Forest. And I've asked that we get that committee together to go back through all the details with the engineer. That was an unbelievable committee, in the fact that we worked with the engineers. We worked with NEO... We worked with NEOSRD, which I, I kind of say that because we all want up with a fee. And we were the first committee ever to hear that fee was coming. And we, Nick, started discussions with our Law Department, we started discussions with the mayor, of how do we avoid that fee, because that money could be used anywhere within, um, NEORSD, which included Cuyahoga County projects, to the point that we were able to get them to agree to give impartial money back to us. But now it's all held up with the courts, because it was, um, decided it may not have been legally handled, that it was appropriate that they could enforce a fee upon everyone. So, have asked to come back so we can start that again, because we also heard from various other DSCC, um, committees and from other areas, and how they were handling water and the issues there. Um, the representatives are from all quadrants of the city. To Mr. Logo's point, we had people from the north, we had people from the birdie streets, we had people by the high school, we had people from the south, all the way down. Um, we didn't want to just emphasize Indian Creek. Because Indian Creek, we know runs through here, but there are other issues besides Ledge. They don't call it Ledge View for nothing, there are ledges in Indian Creek. So, we asked them to resurrect that committee and get the people back together, including some new faces that represent other areas of the city, so we can tackle this again and put together a plan. Thank you.
If anyone's interested in that, uh, contact me, and we'll start forming that list. Are there any other committee reports? Hearing on department reports, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, within the next, uh, couple of weeks, you're going to see a lot of activity around the city. Um, Air Lane and the B Streets, uh, all the crossovers have been marked. They'll be, uh, probably be getting cut within the next couple of weeks. And then, once that's done, we're gonna, and while that's being done, we're going to be ditching the B Streets near all the crossovers, so that, uh, that'll allow for proper flow and for depth that we're going to need because of the circuit pipe we're going to be putting in, actually, concrete pipe. Uh, and that will be done once all that is, is done first. Um, Air Lane at Ledge, we'll get a, uh, new crossover there. We already did the other side by Skyland. And they'll also be getting a catch. So, before the roads can even be resurfaced, there's eight crossovers and three catches that have to be done first. And also, in the Highland Homes area, the DOES is, uh, moving right along with resealing all the, uh, sanitaries. So, uh, Highland Homes, once everything's done, it's, they're going to be inconvenienced for a while. You'll have road closures, you'll have delays. But once it's all done, you'll have some nice streets, you'll have your sanitary lines redone, you'll have your ditching in a lot of areas done also. Plus, it'll be relined, you'll have birmingham. So, it's, it's worth the aggravation you're going to go through, just put up with it. Um, also, uh, the storm sewer at, uh, at, on Adderbury, we're going to be doing about, uh, three hundred, two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet of that. We have to reseal all the joints. And then, uh, later in May, we'll pour the sidewalks that have been upheaved because of that. And, uh, that'll be taken care of also. Uh, just so everybody knows, that Sugar Bush work was started this week on the playground. Uh, if everything goes right, and that's weather and everything else that's involved, uh, it should be up by next week, Tuesday, Wednesday.
So, that playground will be in place then? I know there's a lot of residents have contacted me about that?
Yes, it should, if everything goes right. They're pouring all the posts now, you know, the first-
And you cared for the trees? Because when we walked that last year, we have a lot of trees at Sugar Bush that had to go down.
We took down just-
And the basketball court that needed to be, I mean, the parks, we've talked about that, the parks, yeah.
We took a lot of trees down.
Okay.
And there's probably more that have to be taken down, but right now, that's what we were limited to. And we, but almost two hundred were taken down. Um, and once, uh, once the playground's up, uh, then, uh, our city crews will go in there. We're going to pour the sidewalks, they'll be six foot wide, and they'll be handicapped accessible to the, uh, not only to the, uh, playground, but also to the pavilion, which for the first time, will have an actual concrete floor. And that's to make it handicap accessible. And before we, uh, do the concrete work, we will repaint the pavilion. And, um, uh, and we'll have new grills put in, and plus, uh, all the tables are being redone too. So, it's, it's, it'll be nice. It's just, like I say to everybody, just be patient, you know, you've got to wait. Yeah, a lot of work to be done.
That's a long way from last year when you and I and-
Right.
The parks guys were walking around.
Yeah, it's a long way, you'd be surprised. Uh, and it's really good for the police too, because now they'll be able to see the pavilion. You can see the pavilion now from the street. So, if there's any activity going on, we'll be able to see it from the street.
I'm sure the chief likes that.
We were able to finance this as a result of a grant, the Modi and ours, so we want to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, it's been a great-
The playground was the grant, the rest was our money.
Well, yes, well, clearly, but, you know, the playground itself, yeah.
Because you and I talked about how am I going to do, where do I get the money?
And then from there, hopefully, uh, maybe next year, they'll, we could do the parking lot. Then it'll be done, a hundred percent.
If anyone's aware, there's actually a trail on a Sugar Bush, that there are several people that use it all the time.
There is a trail there, but it, it just needs to be-
Yeah, that runs along the top of the ledges.
And also, we're going to be, uh, starting Sugar Bu- I mean, Memorial. You'll see in the next couple of weeks, the cannon's going to be gone. That's because it's going to be refurbished. Within a week or so, and also within a couple of weeks, we're going to start the gazebo, refinishing that. And we're going to do it right. We're going to hire professional painters. We're going to, uh, do everything that's necessary to make it, bring it as much as we can back to its original-
Yeah, the, the way it really should look, yes.
Can you, can you mention, Jim, I'm sorry, can you mention what you said at the Parks and Rec meeting about in-house and-
Oh, yeah, we, uh, with our, one of our new hires is actually, that's, is one of his, uh, main professions, is doing that. So, and then, uh, uh, once he's doing all that, we're also going to have more electrical put there, plus the water. So, that's all going to be added also. So, there's a lot that's going to be going on, there's a lot more projects that are on the books. It's not just those few things. Uh, we have, uh, uh, the, the outlet at Lake Forest, at the Lake Forest Estates, that's going to be done. I have a contractor coming in with a, uh, a big machine with a pounder, you know, with a man, and they'll destroy that. And then our crews will do all the finish work. Um, the sinkholes throughout the city, I, uh, so many, I have a folder full. And we'll start die-testing all those to see what the causes are, the reasons why it's happening. And, um, we'll have a better picture probably next year, a lot of other things will have to be done. Uh, Lori and Eileen will be restored. We've got a hundred and fifty feet of pipe by, by Shepherd that we're also going to do, by Shepherd and Broadway. Uh, we're going to help out our friends at Glen, at Glen Willow, uh, you know, to, to do what our share of keeping it from flooding. And, uh, plus all the regular stuff, birmingham, ditching that we have to do. There's a lot of, a lot of things to do.
Right. Jim, um, did you have a chance to go over by Driftwood?
Oh, yes, we went over there. And one of the things I want to explain for, for Driftwood, that's where the work stopped on full depth. And I explained to a couple of the people there that this year, we were going, we had that hundred thousand that we were going to use to continue from Driftwood and do other streets. But because of the changes we made, that Highland Homes, because of the condition of their roads, that money is being used up. But I did tell the residents that we'll keep co- co-patching it, but also that Sylvia had mentioned, and the Finance Chair, that in the end of May or beginning of June, if we see we have more funds, that we will allocate the money to do these streets, and we'll continue to do more, and we'll do as much as we can once we know then how much money we have to put into it.
Okay, thank you.
And, and they, they seem to be satisfied with that.
Thanks.
Okay, and could you mention, um, two things? That you and I have talked about, Birmingham, which we know we have several people that thought they were told by previous members in two thousand and twelve that it was part of the twenty-year program, and, you know, you were saying it depended on money.
We have sections of road, of all the roads that need Birmingham, we're going to do the worst sections. We won't be able to do it all, because there's so much, there's so many other things we have to do. But we will get all the worst sections, so that we could firm up the road. There's a lot of Shepherd that needs to be done, Ledge Road, uh, North Bedford.
Yeah, there's a very bad stretch on Ledge there.
Right, exactly, from, um, actually, it's on the south side going west-
Right.
Towards, and then it ends where it's bad by, right where the curbs start.
Right.
So, yeah, well, that's one of the areas we're doing. So, there's a lot of work, the men are going to be very busy, that's all.
The only other quick update on the senior gutter cleaning?
Yes, it's, uh, there's only a few houses to do, we're almost done. And the reason they only have a few more, they got them all in one day, but there were five more that we had. So, I, I let him know, he's going to go take care of those too. I think he had to wait for the rain, you know, because of rain, he wasn't able to. But everybody got their gutters cleaned out and, and everything that we said they would-
Thank you.
Um, that's my report, Mayor. I just hope everybody could be patient, because the roads aren't going to be very friendly this spring and summer. Eighty-two Highland Road, plus all the homes-
There's going to be a lot of orange barrels, yeah.
Right.
When, um, once again, how many men do you have?
Oh, we'll have fifteen with the new hire, yeah.
Fifteen men? So, that old image of people leaning on shelves doesn't apply to us?
They won't have time to lean on a shoulder, no.
And thank you very much for the effort.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, GetGo was given a non-conformist approval for the building only. We're still working on the engineering drawings, uh, some minor details. I'm hoping that we can get permits pulled for them in a matter of two, three weeks, and they could get started. Um, we also have an inspector started the catch basin inspection program. That's going to be every catch basin throughout the city, we're going to pull, I'm going to go in, take a look at every single one, see what needs to be done, whether casting's offplace, it needs to be mortared, what have you. We're going to snap pictures, and it's going to be located, we're going to put it on our new stormwater mapping, which I'd like to show Council as soon as that is done. Uh, GPD is wrapping that up, and, and it is going to have every, like I said, every catch basin, every manhole, every lateral, all throughout. Um, and, uh, that was part of our EPA Phase Two compliance, so I'm glad to see that's getting done. Um, we're busy with the new home starts and the commercial work, and, uh, that concludes my report.
All right, Mike, thank you. Angela?
Thank you. Um, our spring swim lessons run April twenty-seventh through June sixth. Registration starts at the end of this month. Um, members begin on March thirtieth, residents April second, and the general public are welcome to register for swim lessons beginning on April fourth. The deadline is April twenty-second for that. Um, and these will, these classes for all of the different levels and age groups will fill up. Um, spring's one of our most popular swim lesson sessions, getting ready for summer. So, if you are thinking about enrolling your children or yourselves, um, I would suggest you do that as early as possible. Our tot t-ball session number one for the year, which will run on Saturdays, June thirteenth through July eighteenth, Saturdays at nine-thirty AM in Longwood Park. Uh, this is for boys and girls ages four through six years old. And the deadline is May thirtieth or until it fills up, whichever comes first. Uh, and this usually fills up as well, and we usually have a waiting list. So, again, we encourage early registration. Um, the five K, as Jan mentioned, is on Sunday, April nineteenth. Uh, we do encourage people to register, whether you're going to run, walk, it doesn't matter what age group you are in. Uh, bring your children, bring your entire families. Uh, you can register online, there's a link to the website to register at macrec.com. Um, that's on our page, and it's easy to get to it. Uh, the festival coming up, June fourth through the seventh, so hopefully, I will keep reiterating it, so people mark their calendars. Um, and lastly, the Rec Center will be closed on Easter Sunday, which is Sunday, April fifth. So, please enjoy that time with your families, and, uh, we'll see you the following Monday. Thank you.
All right, um, Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the bid package for the road program, we are having a bid opening on Monday, April sixth. Um, so we'll have those reviewed and, uh, the results presented at the April ninth council meeting. Um, we had a, a progress meeting with ODOT this afternoon on the two seventy-one widening project. Um, and it was mentioned at that meeting that ODOT, um, if you may or may not be aware, they've had issues with the shoulder, the temporary shoulder pavement on the widening project, and they've fixed a lot of that area. Um, they've got another round of patches they need to fix, and it sounds like they're going to try to do that Saturday, so be prepared for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, and thanks again for all the work you've done.
Nick, uh, could I just ask you, uh, there was a, uh, delay in traffic last week because there was a big hole in the road up there on two seventy-one? What happened there?
They had edge of pavement failures on the shoulders.
A pavement failure?
Tim?
Very busy week, Mayor. Uh, our week started off Monday with a juvenile getting hit by a car on Highland Road, and it hasn't gotten any better. We had a dual motorcycle crash on four eighty yesterday, along with a working structure fire up at Luma Curve. I'd like to thank Northfield Center, Northfield Village, Twinsburg, Oakwood for coming over to assist us with extinguishment of that fire. We called the state fire marshal in, and, um, he is currently investigating that with our investigators to see exactly what the cause is. Nobody was injured, unfortunately. Uh, today in Cincinnati, they did lose a firefighter who fell down a elevator shaft from floor five to two on top of an elevator and, uh, succumbed to those injuries, so, um, our hearts are out to them. That's all I have, Mayor.
That was a great job last night on Luna. Uh, that building and that company, uh, actually makes all the signs for all the airports, uh, that are on the runway. I think for all the countries, for everybody, not just the United States, they export signs too. So, uh, very good business there, and I spoke with the owner this morning, and it's, the way it sounds, it's pretty bad inside, Tim, pretty, the building's there, but inside-
Yeah, structurally, it's pretty sound. Unfortunately, the fire started, uh, in probably the worst place it could be, the farthest away, and it, uh, we, we, uh, we had a real problem getting in there with the, the, the smoke and the heat that we had. So, um, we, uh, we did the best that we could and finally got in and got it knocked down. It's structurally sound. Unfortunately, they had a lot of very expensive sign-making equipment in there, and, um, that's, that's what got a lot of the brunt of the heat and the smoke.
Back to Spide, huh?
All right, thank you, Tim. John?
Uh, the Nardoni Hills communities have been experiencing some burglaries lately, so we're just asking residents to watch out for you neighbors, and if you see something or hear something, call the police immediately. Don't wait a half an hour, don't wait a day, call immediately. If you have a, a big problem with people waiting, they think about it, they call their spouse or somebody else, they talk it over, then they call us. The person's long gone. So, if you see something, just call right away, it's not a problem, that's why we're here. That's all I have.
One more thing. Maybe you want to talk about Nixel for the eighty-two million times, only because of what Jim's going to be doing and what Nick's telling us?
Yeah, we, um, we have Nixel, uh, dispatch usually sends out a, uh, text. It also goes to computers for those who don't have a cellphone that receives texts. You sign up, you can go to nixel.com, that's N-I-X-L-E dot com, and you can sign up to get your things through the computer or text messages, or you can text, I think it's eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, Mayor? I think that's the-
That's it.
Yeah, eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, and the message, in the, uh, top, and in the message section, put our zip code, four-four-zero-five-six. And then anytime we have a street closure, an accident, a street light out, or anything like that, when dispatch can, they send out that next, Nixel alert, everybody's aware of it. So, it's a wonderful service, it's free, it doesn't cost you anything, and you'll get the latest information that you can, and you can avoid a, a traffic jam or something like that. We can put missing people on there, I mean, just tons of things that we can do with that system. So, it's a wonderful, free service to the, to the residents or anybody who drives through.
Thank you. Tom? All right, we'll move on to, is there any unfinished business?
I may have missed it. What's the status of the signs at Ledge?
Oh, the stop signs, we're waiting for the weather to break. Have we received them, Jim?
The stop, the stop signs at Ledge Road?
No, nothing is coming in. They said it would take, uh, four to six weeks for them to come in. But once they do, we're prepared to roll right up.
So, we should see them by May at the latest?
I would, I would, no, um, it's been a couple, a few weeks already. I, I would expect maybe second week of April, maybe the third week of April, we should have them.
Tax day. Remind everyone again what we- Remind everyone again what we're talking about.
We're talking about the stop signs that are gonna go right on Northfield and Ledge, which is a pretty rough area, there's been a lot of accidents there, people maybe don't pay attention or whatever it may be, but it is a high-traffic area, so we're putting the stop signs there. They'll be just like the ones that are at North Bedford and...
Alexander.
Hmm?
Alexander.
Yeah, or Pettibone, yeah. It'll be the same type of stop sign. And then we're gonna have lighted stop signs that say, "No through trucks," at stages certain areas that John and Vince told me where they would like them, and so we have about ten of those ordered.
Shepherd eyes.
We'll see how they work. And if they work, if they work well, then we can always add signs to other areas.
Let's hope that, that, that works on Shepherd and some of the other areas.
Yeah.
Could I ask one other question here, on the sand testing from Lake Forest, what are we at there?
Sand testing at Lake Forest, we're, we're gonna have a, we're setting up a meeting with the EPA, because basically, we, we had three good reports. We had reports from Sun County, soil, soil and water, we had a report from the EPA, and we had a report from solar testing. They all seemed to agree the same thing, it's natural, it's a natural cause. But I think the only way we're gonna ever clear this up is just get Medina out of this whole picture.
Yeah, that's right, that's what we've been talking about, yes.
Because nobody agrees that it's gonna be, not anymore.
So the EPA does what in this...
Well, what, what I was told is that we can maybe ask them to enforce subpoena to get samples from them.
Okay.
So that's what we're gonna try, that's the next step. And we're trying to do it the best way we can, because once, we have to be careful how it's approached, because then it could become something where it could take years to get a sample, and we don't wanna get in that position.
Have you also asked the Army Corps of Engineers to take a look, to make sure there's nothing that's changed on that creek, because we don't own the creek? That there's been no change, whether physically or direction?
Well, if you read, if you read their, their declaration of covenants and conditions and restrictions, there's, we're, we're not supposed to be in there, you're not even supposed to cut the grass along the preserve and also on the buffer. It's stated clearly as can be, you're not supposed to do anything. So, and I'm sure the Army Corps of Engineers, if they saw some of the things going on, they wouldn't be too happy, so.
Maybe, but you know, because it's not us, and it's someone, you know, all the things we went through over at the JED, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and when we talk about the Stormwater Committee, the Army Corps of Engineers, maybe it's time to have them come out and walk the creek, because we didn't have these issues, I don't wanna be, way back when it was Girl Scout camp, and then when they first started building, so perhaps their houses that never should have been built were approved, and the creek, I don't know if it's been altered in any way, shape, or form by things being put in it, or by direction, and that's what the Army Corps of Engineer could also help us with.
Yeah, the, the only problem is, is to get the Army Corps of Engineer to come here. That's the biggest problem. They don't exactly...
I'd still ask that we make a call and engage them.
Actually, per, per the covenants, if I may, there are mandates in that document that are a result of Corps of Engineers and EPA involvement in the permitting of that project, and, and per that document, Ohio Stream Preservation has the responsibility of that enforcement.
So have they been out to look at that? Has anyone contacted them?
I have not contacted them.
Can you contact them, have them look at that?
Yes.
I asked John, are they gonna put a stop light up here on, on, on Ledge and North Bedford?
That would be a decision for the mayor, I don't believe so. We're gonna put those lighted stop signs, that's what Jim was talking about, lighted stop signs, not a light, if that's what you're talking about. The lighted stop signs are gonna go at that intersection.
They ran this morning, when I come through there, they ran that stop sign this morning, right through there, no stop at all, coming down Ledge, put up Loveville, no stop at all, right through there.
Not, not Ledge and Northfield, Mike, Ledge and North Bedford are where the stops...
Ledge and North Bedford.
Yes, that's where the, that's where the stops...
They went through that this morning.
What time?
Oh, I was about, I was a little over she-day, right, I was about ten thirty, quarter eleven.
The stop signs...
Yeah, stop sign, stop light, yeah.
Well, the stop signs are gonna flash, Mike, they're gonna flash bright lights, and they're three foot, if they can't see that.
That's right.
All right, any other new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this week, yes, as a matter of fact, today, when reading the opinion section of the news leader, which a resident voiced her opinion into the editor, I would have to agree that being disappointed in the lack of coverage from local newspaper regarding funding and bid process for several roads past March twelfth, that the news leader did not put in. In error, she forgot to mention that not only the whole council, as well as the administration, worked hard and attended every meeting and work session to get the budget completed, and it took all of the administration and council to approve that budget and the roads ordinance. This was not possible to complete with one member, but it took all of us working together for the same cause, and that cause was for the business of the residents. So I am taking this time to thank you, the administration, and all the members of council working together to get our budget done on time, and the roads ordinance early, so we can get it out for bidding. Thank you all.
All right, Rita, thank you. Moving on?
New business?
New business?
Two real quick things. You know I always talk about the kids. Well, I've got an older kid to talk about, and we went to this car show, I went under duress, but my gearhead husband wanted to go to the I X Center for the Piston Auto Show, which is different kinds of cars and older cars, and there was a local resident who, if you had seen the plain dealer, there was a picture of a truck, doesn't show who's standing by the truck, doesn't show any signs, and I wind up, as we're meandering for hours through the show, there's Mrs. DeLugos, and the truck was Ed's truck that her son David has finished and is there, and that's the one in the newspaper. So I want to congratulate them in having that there, as well as there was a neighbor whose name I did not get, another Macedonia resident, who had their car there, that of course Greg knew exactly which one he was talking about. And it's very nice to see that we are out there in different fashions and in different ways. So Barb has the picture there, if anyone wants to take a look at it.
Hold it up, I'll turn it. The blue truck is my David's. What a wonderful way to wake up Sunday morning.
I have no idea that it's his, but that was, congratulations. Congratulations. Second of all, for council certification, we all received an invite to the Empowering Local Leadership Conference in Washington, D.C. I will be attending that, so I would ask that you consider the factor that last year, we only had one representative and the entire budget was used, that there is gonna be more than one, if any of else people are going, I will be attending, so we need to consider that when you're making your own arrangements. I'm looking forward to meeting Congressman Joyce and Congressman Renacci. Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other new business?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of considering a complaint against an a public employee and/or official.
Second?
Josephine, she said second.
I heard her.
Okay.
Hold call.
Ms. Darrell?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
I have a question, this was brought to my attention today, apparently, this is regarding myself. This was made public, so why is it an executive session?
Yes, we'd like to just...
Because it's the newspaper called today to inquire about it, so why would it be an executive session? So if it's public record, why do we need to go sit in the private room?
We're, we're asking for an executive session. And you vote no or yes?
I'm asking a question before I vote, that's gonna dictate my vote.
There's information that we're trying to elicit that is not public record at this point, you can make the...
My answer's no.
Mr. Mulner?
No.
Ms. Tully?
I'd have to ask, how did the newspaper find out about this? I know, I believe he was copied on the email, although you weren't, if I remember correctly. Only Mr. Harper was copied on that. I find that interesting, because we're talking about, the newspaper doesn't give full credit to everything that's done, but Mr. Matta Jasek only wrote to one newspaper, interesting. Anyhow, my vote is no, because I didn't even know we were gonna do this. And as usual, we have a party or two who get together and decide to add things to the agenda without the rest of us knowing, so my vote is no.
And that's not true, Jan, nobody got together and decided this, okay? I've asked for an executive session, okay, and I didn't contact the news media, I didn't make it public, I'm not the one who sent it to the news media, the, the person that is making the complaint, okay?
I'm just saying, no one, no one picks up the phone to call anybody else.
So that is the truth, and I've asked for an executive session so we can speak to him and, and private.
And you, you, I asked you prior to the meeting what this was in reference to, you did confirm that it was about me, and you also stated that, well, you know what happened to me, now it's happening to you, so...
No, you said...
The tit-for-tat stuff for me is, is getting a little silly.
No, that's not what I said, Nick, you said, you, that's not what you said, Nick, let's get the story straight.
I think it's irrelevant and inappropriate, thank you.
Nick, let's get the story straight, that's not what I said.
That's exactly...
You made a comment to me, and I said, you know what, I was, I was dragged into an executive session, didn't even know I was dragged into an executive session, didn't even know it was about me until in the executive session, and Mr. Miller was asked to go into an executive session. So, you know, at one point, so...
Mr. Miller's not even on council, what the heck is said up to do with this?
But you were not here, Jan, they had an executive session on Mr. Miller as well.
We don't talk about roads anymore, we, we argue over a statement that's misconstrued.
Well, can we also, is this only for Mr. Mulner? Since it's up to the public? Because I'd also like to add, there was a complaint that I received about another council member that I want to...
I'd like legal representation in the room as well, please.
I, I told Mr. Zeward I would like that, 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 the law department come in.
Thank you very much for coming. After we come out of executive session, we will only adjourn, there will be no actions taken. Please come again.